Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting at the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council and I will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I'd now like to invite everyone who's willing and able to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you so much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
Wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Aatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Aatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you so much. That will take us to item number...
As women in leadership here in...
All right. That'll take us to item number four, which are the meeting minutes tonight. I'll be assisted by council member Chin. Council member Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I submit for approval, item 4A1.
Okay. It's been moved by council member Chin and seconded by council member Keating. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with council member Navarro absent. Next up, we're going to move to item 4B, Acceptance of Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Council member Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I submit for acceptance, items 4B1 through 4B9.
It's been moved by council member Chin. Do I have a second? Seconded by council member Garland. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes six to zero with council member Navarro absent. That brings us to item 5A, Mayor's Reports and Announcements. I'd ask the council if they can join me down at the front for our International Women's Day proclamation. I'd have a proclamation here for International Women's Day, but I'd also like to have Dr. Valisa McMillan-Humes join me up here as well, who is our chief diversity officer for the city of Tempe. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas International Women's Day celebrates the collective power of women, pays tribute to their achievements, and recognizes the remaining challenges to further efforts for women's rights and gender equality, encouraging and mobilizing all people to contribute to positive change. And whereas the city of Tempe pays tribute to the accomplished and visionary women who have helped build our country and our city, including those whose contributions have not been adequately recognized and celebrated. And whereas the city of Tempe honors our female city manager, council members, department directors, and city employees who inspire the continued work in advancing the rights, opportunities, and full participation of women and girls of all backgrounds. And whereas when women continue to struggle against discrimination in our world, we honor and encourage efforts to inspire others to understand and value women's inclusion, such as the Tempe Police Department's goal of having 30% of all sworn officers be women by 2030, in support of the 2024 theme of inspiring inclusion. And whereas the city of Tempe wishes to take this opportunity to celebrate the diversity of the people in our city, to continue to learn from the women in our community, and to commit ourselves to respecting the rights of women, to lead secure, healthy, creative, and free lives. And whereas the city urges all its residents to do their part in ensuring that the future for girls is bright, equal, safe, and rewarding. Now therefore I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare March 8, 2024 as International Women's Day in Tempe, Arizona." And Jason, I believe you also have a video for us as well? Wonderful. All right. We're going to play the video now, too.
As women in leadership here in Tempe, we have advice for other women.
Be a mentor or find one.
Stand out, be first, model success for others.
Be yourself, be a friend, and be ready to shine.
From leading firefighters and police officers to directing our municipal utilities team, women hold every kind of position our city offers.
Raise your hand for opportunities to shine.
Women are vital to Tempe's workforce.
There's still more that we can do to reach equality.
Believe in yourself, try for that promotion, know that you're ready.
Lead the way and hold the door open for others.
Happy International Women's Day.
So I would now like to ask all of the women who were in that video if they could come down and actually join us at the front. And frankly, from my perspective, if any woman in the audience who is a Tempe City employee, I'd love for you to come down here in the front as well. And I'd like to make sure as well that the women on our city council, who once again I should say make up the majority of our city council, should all come down here as well to join this photo. And I'm going to go back up there where I belong.
One more. One more.
One more.
One more.
Roll the protocol.
All right. Big smiles. I'm looking at you, Tanya. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you all very much.
All right. Good job.
Smile bigger.
Smallest person.
So why don't homes want me to also make sure that I thanked all of the gentlemen who were here today as well, who are wearing purple? So, uh... Thank you, thank you. All right. Now, Jason, he already showed the video, so we are all done with that item. So that will take us to item 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one brief announcement, actually two employees that I'd like to acknowledge. New hire, Mike Michael Sims, who's sitting right across from me, a deputy city clerk. And he has just started on February 26th. Welcome. I just wanted to make sure that we publicly welcome Michael. We're so happy you're here. And thank you to Kara for filling in for so many months along with Karen Doncovio. Thank you. And then secondly, Jonathan Schuffield. I think he's... Oh, oh, there he is. Oh, thanks, Jonathan. Jonathan is our new government relations director, and he also started on February 26th. And we're so anxiously excited to have him in that role, especially during these times. So thank you, Jonathan, for joining the Tempe team.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam City Manager. That takes us to item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. I will now go to the cards that I have here under Public Appearances. And I'm going to, once again, as I said, take these in the order in which I receive them. Speaker number one this evening is Robert Swanson. Mr. Swanson, are you here? Or is Mr. Swanson virtual?
No, he is not.
He's not? Okay.
He signed up as in-person.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Then I will move on to item number... Not item... Person number two. That is Kate Skelton. Okay. Yes. Wonderful. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kate Skelton, and I am a resident of Tempe. After all that nice stuff, I have something I'd like to address that I'm very upset about. So here goes. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that the city of Tempe Council investigate the party and/or parties responsible for Tempe Tomorrow General Plan 2050, Special Election Proposition 478, with an emphasis on the rezoning of community Papago Square, located on the northeast corner of College Avenue and McKellips Road. I'm also here to ask that if Proposition 478 is to pass, that Papago Square retroactively be restored to zoning single-family housing for the following reasons. It appears that the drafters of the legislation have unreasonably, with nothing but monetary gain in mind, chosen to target this community for redevelopment. Currently, the general plan of 2040 Papago Square is listed as openly residential as the rest of the area. Shockingly, in Plan General... I'm sorry. In General Plan 2050, Papago Square is being rezoned to multifamily low moderate 25 DUAC, specifically delineating it from the surrounding areas of single-family designation. This is egregious for three reasons. Firstly, because the precedent of the area is being single-family residential. Second, multifamily homes with actual shared walls in Marlboro Park Villas directly one block south of us are designated single-family residential in Plan 2050. And lastly, because General Plan 2050 is being politicized as Tempe Together, not changing single-family home designations and creating affordable housing. These statements are disingenuous at best and outright lies or corruption at worst. The only benefit to rezoning Papago Square would be for investors and developers to usurp the community over the next few years, to tear it down, put in million-dollar high-rise condos in its place, and create millions in revenue for developers. Whoever is responsible for this legislation is well aware of the prime piece of real estate this community is in trying to exploit this special election with the absolute hope voters don't see it for what it really is, a backhanded exploited cash grab at the city of Tempe's resources. Papago Square is a patio home community with community structures that are attached but are single-family. There are no shared internal walls. Most importantly, they do not breach the skyline as multiple-level buildings and have... Sorry. Have been and should be considered single-family home. What this rezoning seeks to do is allow 25 units per acre multi-level construction with limited to no outdoor space encroaching on every area resident's view of the surrounding beauty. While I could go on, I simply ask that the Tempe of Council... City of Tempe council members recognize this for what it is. Do not rezone Papago Square. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, for Ms. Skelton, sit down. Is it possible that we could have Jeff Tamilevich and Ryan Leveig speak to Ms. Skelton about the general plan? I know they were the two in that department who were primarily responsible for working with it.
Mayor, yes, we were corresponding. He's going to... Yep, there he goes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Skelton. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Peter Kovacs. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Professor Peter Kovacs, Budapest, Hungary, Tempe, Arizona, and Warren, New Jersey. I want to acknowledge that this month is Hungarian History Month. I sent you an email relative to that, and I just wanted to acknowledge that fact. Our Independence Day, as a tripartite citizen of Canada, Hungary, and the U.S., is March 15th. And that is acknowledged of Kocsiud Lajosz, Lewis Kassuth, who was the leader of the revolution in 1848, just so you know this historically. And before I go, in the early voting results, I have two write-in votes and one write-in vote for Randy Keating. Blessings on all of you. Keep up the good work. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next up, speaker number four is Matt Schmel. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Uh, waiting on someone else's show. Can you move me to the next section?
Sure. Um, oh, to the... To the end of the meeting? Sure, I can do that. Can I? Right? Madam Clerk? Yes, that's fine. Thank you, Ms. Schmel. The next speaker I have is Tracy Williams. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Williams. I am a Tempe residence... Resident. I live just about a block off of Kiwanis Park. And last week, I am... First of all, I am here to issue kudos. Last week, I had had to hear with Bird scooters on the sidewalk that I had been trying for nearly another week to get them removed through the channels listed on the city webpage. I had called. I had emailed, basically getting no response. And then I remembered that Councilmember Hodge had... I have an open-door policy. Email me, call me, whatever. So I emailed. It was late in the day, and I did not expect anything right away. Sepan emailed me back like within 20 minutes. And it went from there. He took... He got in touch with somebody at Bird. They in turn got in contact with me and assured me that those scooters would... There were eight of them. And they originally started being tipped over on the sidewalk. And then somebody purposely set them up on the sidewalk. You know, one is enough. Two is too many. Eight is way beyond. Anyway, I just want to say thank you. I know it's a nuisance, but your team jumped in and did awesome. And I now have contacts if it happens again. Again, thank you for... I know in times when we don't always get kudos, kudos. Kudos. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, staff, as well. All right.
Can I say one more?
Sure. You had more... You had a couple... Few more seconds left?
Sepan saved me this afternoon because I couldn't... I couldn't get to the street I needed to turn on here, and I was lost downtown. So he came to my rescue.
Sepan is definitely known for saving people. He is very, very good. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd wish to address the council at this time? If so, please get my attention. All right. Hearing none, we'll take Mr. Schmel while moving to the end of the meeting, so... And that means I will go to the Consent Agenda, which is listed as item number seven. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The Consent Agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A5, awards of bids and contracts, item 7B1 through 7B19, and resolutions, item 7C1 through 7C14. Once again, any item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right. Seeing that, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a Consent Agenda public hearing item?
No, there were not.
Great. Thank you so much. Council, any other items that you'd like to have removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
Nope. So moved.
All right. Items would... The Consent Agenda has been moved for approval by Councilmember Hodge. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. All right. That takes me then to the Nonconsent Agenda, which is item number eight. All items listed on the Nonconsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. Item 8A is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item is 8A1, which is to approve an increase in the contract amount with Arizona Control Specialists, Inc. for evaluation, servicing, and upgrading of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning control systems in city buildings. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to approve the utilization of one-year state-of-Arizona cooperative contracts with Courtesy Auto of Mesa, Courtesy Chevrolet, Sanderson Ford, EMV Automotive, Larry Miller Toyota, Midway Chevrolet, O'Reilly Chevrolet, PFVT Motors, DBA Peoria Ford, Santan Auto Partners LLC, Ford &amp; San Chevrolet, for the purchase of 80 vehicles. Council, any comments or discussion on this item?
No.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hodge?
Yeah, it is...
All right. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to approve the construction contract to M.A. Mortenson Company for Phase 1 of the Tempe Diablo Stadium Improvements Project located at 2200 West Alameda Drive. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The last item under the section is 8A4, which is to award a construction contract to B&amp;F Contracting, Inc. for the Joint Tempe Mesa Collection System Rehabilitation 2023 Project, GMP01, located at Baseline Road from College Avenue to SR101 Freeway. Council, any comments or discussion?
What should do?
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay to modify height and parking requirements, and a development plan review for a new 13-story mixed-use development consisting of 208 dwelling units and ground-floor commercial uses on .49 acres at College and 7th Mixed Use located at 706 South College Avenue. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham, PLC, and good evening, Manjulavaz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Manjulavaz, law firm of Gamage &amp; Burnham. I know we've had some discussions about this, the DRC and in the public. Wanted to give a brief presentation tonight. We are having... So still having conversations with the planning department, with Jeff and Ryan. And before I start, I want to say that I really appreciate all the work that the planning department has done with this on this building. And I think from Chris Jesper and Jacob and then Jeff and Ryan, you'll see it. We spent about a year and a half working on this building, and I think you really see it kind of in the design and the quality of the project. I just want to go through with you, and then we'll talk a little bit about parking, and we can go forward. I think we all know where the site is at 7th and College, and it's certainly near to you and down the street from our office, and we walk by it every day. So it's a site that's important to both of us. The project itself is to get a PAD and do a DPR for the site. I'm going to go through some of this fairly quickly. The building, as you can see, is a 13-story mixed-use building, has 208 multifamily residential units. And one of the things we really have focused on is, I'm about to talk about, is the 8,300 square feet of street-level retail and restaurant. I mean, this is really about taking the money and putting it back into the restaurants and try to do retail and make sure that look that the east side of college or the west side of college looks like the east side of college, kind of like Postino and Snoozes, and kind of work through the vision that the council has set to us in terms of, we need more restaurants, we need more upscale restaurants, we want to have open-air outdoor patios. So we should talk a little bit about it, but that's... We really focused on trying to go find more adult restaurants, restaurants where people can come. You know, people come from all over. You know, before you go to Gamage, we go to Postino. You know, you can come... Come down here and enjoy the restaurants from an adult standpoint. So, sorry. And then we have so about... We also have... You'll see a lot of landscape enhancements. We have 38 onsite vehicle parking spaces, which I'm going to show you. With... Right now, we're working with it to expand that... The parking. And when we come back to you, Ryan and Jeff and I will have a plan on the expanded parking. I know they had... Oh, they're back. I thought they... They stepped out. But we are working together, and we'll be working to bring back and expand it, little expanded parking plan. But I did want to, you know, still will be certainly lower given this location and I think all the infrastructure improvements that have put in. But it's something that we can all support with the planning department, so I hope that you will be able to support it also. And then we have nine on-street vehicle spaces, which I'm going to talk to you about. But one thing we wanted to do is, you can see, is we've... What you see typically is parking has gone, and I've seen it does, you know, above grade. What we've done is we're going to put the parking on below so you have like an improved streetscape experience that you have. The first thing you see is like overflowing restaurants, and that we really focus kind of on the ground floor, just like you see Postino and Snooze. So when people walk by, you can feel good, they feel good in the outside, in the air, and we can kind of... And one of the things we really have focused on is, I'm going to talk about, is the 8,300 square feet of street-level retail and restaurant. I mean, this is really about taking the money and putting it back into the restaurants and try to do retail and make sure that look that the east side of college or the west side of college looks like the east side of college, kind of like Postino and Snoozes, and kind of work through the vision that the council has said to us in terms of, we need more restaurants, we need more upscale restaurants, we want to have open-air outdoor patios. So we should talk a little bit about it, but that's, we're really focused on trying to go find more adult restaurants, restaurants where people can come. You know, people come from all over. You know, before you go to Gamage, we go to Postino. You know, you can come, come down here and enjoy the restaurants from an adult standpoint. So, sorry. And then we have, so about, we also have, you'll see a lot of landscape enhancements. We have 38 onsite vehicle parking spaces, which I'm going to show you. Right now, we're working with it to expand that, the parking. And when we come back to you, Ryan and Jeff and I will have a plan on the expanded parking. I know they had, oh, they're back. I thought they stepped out. But we are working together, and we'll be working to bring back and expand it, little expanded parking plan. But I did want to, you know, still will be certainly lower, given this location, and I think all the infrastructure improvements that have put in, but it's something that we can all support with the planning department, so I hope that you will be able to support it also. And then we have nine on-street vehicle spaces, which I'm going to talk to you about. But one thing we wanted to do is, you can see is, we've, what you see typically is parking has gone, and I've seen it does, you know, above grade. What we've done is we're going to put the parking on below, so you have like an improved streetscape experience that you have. The first thing you see is like overflowing restaurants, and that we really focus kind of on the ground floor, just like you see Postino and Snooze. So when people walk by, you can feel good, they feel good in the outside, in the air, and we can kind of bring that upscale, enhanced architecture and design. We've taken all, most of the money from the parking and tried to put it into the building and into the area related to the restaurants. So you can kind of see it here, and we've done a couple of things. You can see the outdoor dining, outdoor dining patios. We also have on-street loading spaces, both for the restaurants and, you know, anything else that needs to happen here. We have spaces for Lyft and Uber specifically on College. And then we have the teaser on-street parking spaces for the retail and the restaurants. And then the garage entrance, as you can see, is on the south side along, in the alley. We'll get into the parking plans, we can talk about them later. I wanted to show you the building. So from a building standpoint, and you know, Ryan and Chris and Jeff and I, this, Ryan had a lot of help in terms of kind of, what does this building look like, the quality of the design, the windows, kind of the architectural look. And from my client's standpoint, and I think we've talked a little bit about this, he, it kind of, we have a hospitality feel, kind of those old modern hotels that you see in New York, the stands, this test of time. And that's what we wanted to do, kind of bring something that blends in with both Mill Avenue, kind of portions of the campus and all of downtown, to give it a high-quality touch and feel. So here's, you can kind of see the renderings here at night, you know, really see like that nightlife. It lights up. If some of you, and I've talked to some of you, if you've gone to Sky Song and you've seen kind of the restaurants that they have there, they have a kind of four-bay restaurants, although it's interior, but they also have one where this, kind of the shade lights up, lights up the restaurants. You have four bays where you have kind of both an Italian restaurant, ramen, a little bar, and kind of, that's what we get to see, a nice look and feel of, you know, places where both that neighborhood comes, and then the Sky Song campus can enjoy that restaurant. So the other thing we have done is, because the building to our west is a little bit close to the property line, we've tried to make sure that this has some openness as it opens to Seventh Street to kind of let in natural air and light, and this is something that you see in buildings kind of on the east coast. And so you can see right here where you have openness for the residents to kind of feel the natural air, and you don't have buildings just built property line to property line. Again, kind of in terms of what we see and in terms of really focusing on, see some of the trees, but also landscaping, high-quality on long restaurant streets. And this is some of the window detailing that we spent a lot of time on, but you can kind of see it both in terms of shading and just the amount of detail we've gone to with the windows. So back to my sustainability plan. In terms of sustainability, certainly we have reduced vehicles, and then, which encourages existing public transportation infrastructure and the ride share and car share. We have six electric vehicle spaces. We have onsite car sharing spaces, and Don's here, we talked about it, but you know, in terms of how we're going to do car share that will help us with some of the parking. We have on-street loading spaces. We have exceeding code requirements in terms of bicycle parking. We have all Energy Star appliances, LED light fixtures, and then drought-tolerant landscaping. You know, we've had, obviously, Don's, we've talked to Don a lot about this. In terms of this parking space, we will go back to where we were with the staff and kind of make sure that the staff feels comfortable with our parking. It will be, you know, it'll be a little lower than, it's going to be lower than the city center, but it's a number that I think both the staff and I can, we can all agree to, given just where this building is, in the center, close to, very close to light rail, very close to streetcar, given the car share modes and what we're all trying to encourage, because it's a building for not just today, but for the future. And just, you know, very briefly, to talk a little bit about parking, you know, parking is something that costs a lot of money, and you know, I was on a ULI panel, we talked a little bit about it. You know, we don't want buildings to be housing for cars. We want it to be, buildings are going to be, you know, in terms of be sustainable and affordable, we want to try to help kind of work through that parking and find different ways to kind of get parking, so we can divorce parking from a building, but also make sure the building has adequate amount of parking. So, you know, we touched this briefly, you know, you see some cities going towards eliminating parking requirements. I know we're not there, but you know, 10, 10 years from now, we may be. So just wanted to give you a very brief look at some of the kind of the parking reform, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Vaz. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Vaz. And I haven't had the opportunity to talk with staff about this, this parking issue yet, but I certainly am comfortable with reduced parking for the reasons that you already laid out, right? It's more sustainable, it adds, it adds to the overall housing costs, and the people moving into this building would know that there's not going to be a parking spot for them, so it's not like anyone would be blindsided. So I know you and staff are working that out, and I will have a conversation with staff just to kind of better understand what, what the objection is here. But I do think that, yes, as a body, we need to start thinking about the parking requirements in our downtown urban core to encourage things like walking, biking, and using public transportation. So other cities like Austin are, as you mentioned, are kind of taking the lead on this, so it's something that I do think that, moving on in the future, that we should, we should definitely take a deep look at.
Yeah. No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Keating. I should have said that. Yeah, we are, everybody who moves in here will understand, like you are paying for a parking space. We will make sure we have the right number for the people. I mean, if there are other, there are other parking spaces in downtown, so like other places, they want a space, they can move to another building. But from, you know, typically now, as you see in downtown, you don't get a free parking space. You're still paying for a parking space, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Sustainability is very important to us, and the Green Code Initiative, I believe, has recommendations for parking. And since we are asking for that to be implemented, although we haven't mandated it, I would encourage that we really look at the Green Code initiatives as far as what they recommend for our parking. This is close to light rail, streetcar, all kinds of transportation, buses, orbits. I mean, if I was in that building, I would not have a car, because it, you know, I wouldn't need one. So I just really, I like the project and the sustainability. So that's Jeff and Ryan, if we can really look at the Green Code initiatives on this, that's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in council, further comments or questions?
Yeah, I should say, I love the look of the building. I like the fact that it's not, you know, it's not 27 stories. I mean, it's a 13-story building, and I love the fact that we're talking about getting even more diversity in the downtown when it comes to the look and feel of every. I like modern architecture as well, but I also like some things that look a little bit more old-school, and this looks like something that might be like in a downtown in Chicago or in New York or something of that nature. And I personally live in a brick building, as many of you know, so I like that kind of a little bit more old-school, classic look. So I like the fact that we are sort of diversifying the options we have in the downtown when it comes to building materials, but also heights as well, so.
Councilmember Garland?
Kind of the same thing everybody else said. I like the reduced parking and the idea about that, and I do like the look of the building. I just wanted to make sure that, I like the look of the building, and I think when I'd met, I'd talked about how it's really cool if there's any leftover brick from, from on Mill Avenue, maybe that would be a really cool thing to put up around, around this area, just because you've got that brick in there already. But I like the look, and I like the reduced parking. I think it's a smart, this is smart development. It's where it should be, so thank you.
No, I appreciate it. And I want to say that I really appreciate, I know Jeff and Ryan working with us, and we'll continue to work, because we'll all come back together with a plan.
Sounds good. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further comments or discussion? All right. Seeing none, once again, this is only the first hearing. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for March 21, 2024. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items scheduled for second hearing and final adoption, and votes will be taken this evening on these items. The only item under this section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan land use map amendment from residential to mixed use, adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R4 TOD to MU4 TOD, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new 15-story mixed-use development containing 240 dwelling units on .9 acres for Verve Tempe located at 1011 East Orange Street. The applicant is Sender Associates Chartered and IC Darren Sender. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for taking the time again to review this project. I think we did a full presentation last time, so if you'd like to see a little bit more, let me know. I know the big question, lots of shaking heads. I know the big question was on the sustainability checklist, and we had our sustainability people take a look at this, and also the architect, and I'm here with Bob Loken to directly explain kind of where we're at on the, the green building code. And I do have one. Ryan, did the stipulation get amended?
Yes.
Is it already in there?
Yes.
Okay. So we're all good with working with Ryan on something else?
Sounds good.
Great. Good evening, members of the council. I'm going to flip to the appropriate slide. So I'm going to breeze through this, and if you all have, want to dive into more detail, feel free. So chapters five through 10 are the chapters that have been adopted. I'm just going to go through some of the things where our, our building is, is able to comply, and some areas where we're complying with parts and find it difficult to comply with other parts. So mitigation of heat island effect, the building does have a highly reflective roof. That is the key feature of that one. Pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, this building is on a light rail line, it's in a very pedestrian-oriented area, and we've done a very intentional job of designing the streetscape to make it pedestrian-friendly. It includes retail and includes an outdoor paseo that can also be covered, outdoor seating. So we think it'll be very attractive in the public realm for pedestrians. We do have over 230 bike parking stalls, and we also include, so that's for secured bike parking for residents, and then we also have a number of public bike parking spaces on street, EV charging stations, the, the Green Code requires 2%. We are going to provide 5% installed day one. Irrigation, we are using drip irrigation, and we're using a combination of native and adaptive plantings. Building water use reduction, we are using all water-sense plumbing fixtures, and with residential buildings in particular, that's, that's where a lot of water gets used, showers, toilets, that sort of thing. So that, that is an area where we're complying with the code. Appliances, we are specifying energy-efficient appliances. Pools, this is a very technical portion, and it's not my particular area of expertise, but I understand that there are portions of our pool design that will likely comply with this code, but we will find out more as we work more closely with the specialized pool engineers. Energy efficiency, so I think one of the most important ways to design a building, especially in a, in a heating or cooling-dominated climate like this, is to design the building so that it has the appropriate amount of glazing, of windows. I, I love the look of all glass buildings, and I think a lot of people do, but they're really hard to keep cool, and they usually have a lot more glass than you need to provide the amount of daylight. So the number one thing we can do, and it's not, it's not very sexy, it's not high-profile, but the number one thing we can do is design a building with the appropriate window-to-wall ratio. And, and I think if you look at this building, you'll, you'll, you'll see that, you know, the windows are evenly distributed in a, in a pleasing random pattern, and we've sized them to provide, to be large enough to provide daylight to those spaces, but not, not larger than they need to be. So that's the number one thing. We are also committed to doing, and we've, and we've started undertaking this, is performing an energy model, a whole-building energy model. There's a couple of different ways that you can comply with the energy code. You can either use a prescriptive path where you sort of just meet every little thing that is required. The more intensive and the more robust path is to do an energy model, and the benefit of an energy model is that we analyze the entire building, we analyze the building envelope and the, and the mechanical systems, and it's an iterative process, and we can test different things. And ultimately, the benefit is that we can locate, we can design the building and to locate the insulation where it has the most impact, and a prescriptive model says all walls need to have XR18. In an energy model, we can, we can fine-tune that a little bit more. Indoor environmental quality, there are some of these things that we're, we're doing, like no VOC paint, occupancy centers, sensors for, for lighting in public spaces. Materials and resources, construction waste management, the Green Code calls for 50% of construction waste to be recycled. I'm confident we'll do that just by nature of the construction type of the building. It's a concrete-frame building, and the walls will be light-gauge metal. The majority of the cladding is metal, and just by nature of metal being valuable and easily recyclable, it is, it is, that's what's done in the construction industry in a building of this type. If it were in, in wood buildings, I think that's a little bit more, more difficult to comply with. We're also using high-quality and, and, and regional materials as much as we can. The majority of the cladding is, is metal, which is very durable, has a high recycle content. Construction plans and operations, so this is largely about commissioning the building and, and providing data and an instruction manual, handing that off to the, to the building operators. So we are partially complying with that. We're not doing the entire full commissioning, but there will be a, when we hand over the keys to the building owner, there'll be an O&M manual, there'll be training videos on how to operate the system, there'll be training sessions. So we'll, we'll leave the building in, in good hands with the, with the operators on day one.
Councilmember Garland?
So when I had asked you guys to go through those chapters and let us know what you did, I appreciate, this is easy to read and easy to see, and you know, it's not, it's not mandatory for us to do this, and so I appreciate the fact that you're addressing this as a voluntary thing, but it allows us to also the opportunity to be able to see what you're doing, and then see what the next project that comes to us could be possibly doing, and no excuses, because somebody else is already starting it. So I just want to say thank you for, for doing this. I know that eventually we're going to end up getting to the green on all those boxes on the buildings that we have here, but I appreciate that you did what I was hoping that you would do, and at least get us some information so that we know we're going in the right direction and getting that data that we need when it comes time for us to look at this as a possible, as a mandatory Green Code. So thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Garland, meeting with Eric and, and Jeff as well, that really helps a lot. Tons of great comments from them both, and that really helped us. And they were bringing up, hey, aren't you doing this? Oh, yeah. We're doing that. And, and that's a big part of it. And, and you know, they know what's important to you, so that was very, very helpful. So I, I definitely will be, will be doing that more in the future.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Eric and Jeff.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes. Councilmember Chin and I serve on the Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee, and, and we've been working on this, the Green Code Initiative, so I'm, I'm very happy about this project. It's a model for other developers, and I love the checklist. I mean, it makes, it makes it so much easier to understand, and, and then are you guys using Green Code for parking?
What is it? We're .5 per bedroom, right?
We are under .5, just under, yeah.
Yeah. I, I believe we are, but I will definitely take a look at that. We're, we're just under .5 per bedroom.
Okay.
So we are definitely sustainable, reducing parking.
Good. And then are we going to have any solar on the building?
You know, we can, the, the, the benefit of, of a concrete building is that the, the, it's robust enough that it can easily accommodate those loads in the future. The, the tricky thing with residential buildings, particularly 15-story residential buildings, is there's precious little roof area, and it gets chewed up very quickly by, with mechanical equipment. And in the case of this building, we're, we're putting a lot of our outdoor amenities on top of the building. So what we, what we see is that in lower buildings that have more roof area relative to the volume area, it's more efficient to provide solar. In, in a building like this where there's precious little roof area, it's, it's, there's very little area left where, where we can actually put solar panels.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else in council? Oh, yes, please.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I forgot to introduce myself. Darren Sender, Sender Associates, for the record, 464 South Farmer, Tempe, Arizona.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counsel, any other comments or questions? All right. So once again, we had a little bit of a more abbreviated presentation this evening because we had a full presentation at the previous regular council meeting. This is also a public hearing, and I wanted to make sure that anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item can. So is there anyone in the audience this evening who'd like to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Looks like none. Okay. Sounds good. I'll close the public hearing. Council, any further comments or discussion? All right. Hearing, and I just want to note, too, that the resolution authorizing the general plan amendments does actually require a two-thirds vote, meaning a five out of seven supermajority for approval. We have two votes this evening on this item. First vote here is on the general plan land use map amendment. I'd look for a motion on that item.
Some.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The second vote is on the zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and development plan review. Do I have a motion?
Some.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams, I believe. It was close, though. Please vote. And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. That brings us to item nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item also be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. So I'm going to call upon councilmembers for their comments, and I'm going to start this evening with Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple announcements. The first is Ken McDonald Feedback Survey. The clubhouse at Ken McDonald Golf Course is getting a refresh. Thank you. So I'm so excited about it. I've been pushing for this for years. So the plans include a brand-new clubhouse, parking improvements, and updates to practice areas. We want your feedback. Take an online survey until March 20th at tempe.gov/Forum. The next Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee meeting, our next Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee meeting is here in the council chambers tomorrow at 1:00 PM. This meeting will also be offered virtually and available to re-watch on Tempe 11's YouTube channel. We've got a packed agenda with updates from Reimagined Project and the Chamber of Commerce. We hope to see you soon. Tempe Festival of the Arts, one of my favorite things to do in the year. It's this weekend, and it will run all weekend, and it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:30 PM. We have free admission, food trucks, artist booths, entertainment, beer, and wine. Come out to our downtown Tempe and show your support for the arts. And last but not least, ASU Beach Volleyball Pac-12 South Tournament. If sports is more your thing, ASU Beach Volleyball will be hosting the Pac-12 South Tournament this weekend. All games are free and will be held at Sun Devil Beach Volleyball Facility at 503 South Rural Road, just east of Farrington Softball Field. Come out and watch our undefeated, that's right, undefeated Sun Devil Beach Volleyball team host UCLA, Stanford, California, and beat U of A. Thank you. That ends my announcements.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
No announcements.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
I just have one. The Sixth Annual Tempe Care Fair is coming on Saturday, March 16th, from 9:00 AM to noon. There'll be food, music, and information booths. This will be at the Tempe Community Complex, which is between the library and the History Museum. You can learn about how city Tempe programs and services can help you and your family. You can get information about housing assistance, homeless programs, free or affordable preschool programs for older adults, and victim services, and more. You can also talk to our experts about the best ways that we can help and assist you, and you can also find out how you can volunteer with us, which we'd love to have you as a volunteer. And if you'd like more information, you can go to tempehumanservicesday.org. It's a great event. Hope to see you there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
So it's this Saturday, March 9th. Join me for my breakfast with Berdeta. It'll be at Kiwanis-Cock Recreation. It's a really good one because it's going to have meat-elected officials that are not in the city. So it'll be Greg Stanton, Congressman Greg Stanton. It'll be Supervisor Jack Sellers. It'll be Representative Missy Epstein. It'll be, I mean Senator, sorry. It'll be Senator Juan Mendez. It'll be Representative Melody Hernandez, and one and only Representative Hodge, my son. So it's a great chance to come out and get a chance to meet the electives who work with us. So, okay. And I'm going to keep continuing this from, we have our free tax preparation. It's from January 29th to April 13th. Come out, and it's usually, is that Gracie, is that Gracie?
Gracie Village?
Yeah, I think it's Gracie Village. Yes, it is Gracie Village. What's interesting about this is a lot, most of the people who's preparing the taxes are college students. So it is, and it's free. So come out, if you know anybody who needs it done, have them come out. And this is important. This is be an upstander, not a bystander. This is our Sandy Hook Promise. Mayor, can you show your arm? And he has one on right now. It's really big right now with our students. We have it from March 25th to 29th. So our students, it'll be over 100 students from Tempe that's doing it. So. And you are invited to, what is that? I can't read it.
Your screen on presentation.
I know. Let me put it on my presentation because I can't see.
That was the Tempe Housing Authority after the mixer.
Yep. There you go. I apologize. I can't see without my glasses.
Where are they?
Ah, they're upstairs. Should be with me. On March 26th, from 2:30 to 4:00 PM, you're invited to the, Marwood just said it because I still can't see it. Oh, Tempe Housing Authority. That's near and dear to mine, and Councilwoman Garland's heart. So please come out. The first 25 landlords to sign up will receive a free what? Mug? Ooh, okay. And a leather-bound journal. So come on out. And I think that's it. Oh, no, I have one more. I don't know why it's not on there, but it should be Happy Women's Month for all of the women and girls in our community. We just pledge a happy month for us and enjoy and celebrate well.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Keating?
Just want to wish my brother Pat a happy 51st birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I don't have any comments this evening, so I will move on then to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? If so, please state your name and come forward. I have one card here from before, and then I will do another open call to the public, see if there's anyone else. But the speaker I have here is Matt Schmel. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Matt Schmel, Tempe. Mayor Woods, councilmembers. I am speaking again on behalf of the Buena Vista Rancho's, Calle de Caballos, and Sunburst Farms neighborhoods. To refresh your memory, 250 households of taxpaying, voting Tempe citizens signed a petition to you asking you to enforce the Tempe City Code on this bridle path easement issue. In 1995, Tempe approved Shady Lane only with explicit legal limitations, including the bridle path easement. 2019 to 2020, Tempe told Mr. Nerwin the easement couldn't be extinguished as the city required the easement as a condition of approval. In the spring of '21, Tempe obtained an outside legal opinion telling you, Tempe, you had a duty to enforce the code. In October of '21, the Tempe City Council unanimously approved legal action with regard to the bridle path easement, and a compliance letter was issued. But then in December of '21, Nerwin's attorney sent a letter to Tempe threatening a lawsuit. And in July of '22, on a Sunday afternoon, Tempe quietly closed the complaint. Our neighborhood's attorney's letter to Tempe in September of '22 refuted the arguments by Nerwin's attorney and made clear that the code applies, and Tempe has a duty to enforce that code and agreements on the plat. The failure of Tempe to enforce the city code is of concern to the over 250 households of our neighborhoods as it impacts property values and has already resulted in many expressing that building permits aren't needed, as Tempe has set the precedent not to enforce the code. Last year, the city manager, Rosa Anciowski, and community development director, Jeff Temilevek, were pressed as to why Tempe won't enforce the city code. Jeff first told me it was against procedure. When pressed further, however, Jeff told me that the city attorney told him the plat map didn't meet the definition of a plan required by code. That's an absurd, unsupported argument straight out of the letter by Nerwin's attorney. The argument further fails miserably because every time a Tempe resident files a permit application citing variances on the plat maps, Tempe acknowledges their legality and allows the exception. And in fact, Tempe has now issued permits to Nerwin where variances on his plat map were cited in the application to build a pool house for a swimming pool that has just been demolished and filled in. Is that, as some of you have said, you just want the issue to go away, or you just don't care, or is your legal advice subpar, or, as others have suggested, Tempe has forgotten its voters and a new council needs to be voted in? Mayor Woods, councilmembers, this encroaching wall in the bridle path is a violation of the legal stipulations on the plat map and the Tempe City Code, and you all swore an oath to enforce those codes. 250 households of voters are expecting that of you. An apologies to Mayor Woods and Vice Mayor Adams, who have in fact supported us on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Schmel. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have, I just got another card here, is Nancy Roberts. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm also a resident of the community Matt was speaking about, and I just wanted to invite and encourage you to rethink about this situation. Tempe's talking a lot about creating character areas, character neighborhoods, and we who live there have the blessing of being in a place that 50 years ago, when most of us weren't here or weren't able to make decisions like this, people had the foresight to create a community that allowed people in the middle of our city to experience an outdoor world. And many of us who live there, I've lived there for 24 years now, many of us who live there were drawn there from just coming into the community, often through the park that hosts so many different basketball practices and things, and seeing the ends of these bridle trails where you can peek in and you see horses and you see emus and you see a world that's so different and takes us away. I'm a licensed mental health professional, and it just means the world to me to be able to live in a place like this and see families around. I don't own horses, but I love seeing neighbors and meeting neighbors riding by in theirs. I love myself walking with kids and grandkids on these bridle paths and having them experience what I encourage all of my clients to do who are suffering from anxiety and depression. Get out in nature, be delighted by the world around you, away from cars, away from big buildings, away from noise. We have a unique opportunity here, and if you allow this one greedy property owner to ignore the history and the protections that we were promised through the city of Tempe and built into the bridle path, there's nothing to stop everybody else from doing the same. And then the work of all these people who thought so much about the physical and emotional mental health needs of a community like this in the middle of the city will be ignored. So as you care so much about creating character neighborhoods going forward, I really ask you to stop and take legal action to just follow through with the promise that was made in 1995 to people who were there before us and stand up so that this neighborhood doesn't disappear. And when people are talking about developing character neighborhoods, we're not at the same time losing a beautiful character neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Appreciate it. All right. That's all the cards I have this evening. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak before the city council this evening? If so, please get my attention. Oh, yes, sir. Please. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. My name is Robert Swanson.
Ah, Mr. Swanson, yes.
And I live in the neighborhood that was mentioned by
Yes.
Matt Schmel, Sunburst Farms. And I also agree with what was said previously. I grew up in the neighborhood, and I still live in the area. It's very open, a lot of animals. It's unique character, and as a kid, going up and down the bridle path was something we could do in our neighborhood. It wasn't filled with trash bins. It's not used in the alleyway. It's actually walkway, pathway for horses and other animals. I would just like the council to consider the historical nature, the plat maps, why people moved there in the first place was because of how it currently exists, and to have one neighbor change that character would be most unfortunate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing that, I will close that portion of the meeting, and I'll move on to item number 11, which is adjournment.[1786.65]